Good afternoon and welcome to the 2023 annual public hearing for DC Green Bank. We're excited about the opportunity to speak to the public today about our performance and to hear from all of you about what we can do more of and what you're excited about in the future from DC Green Bank. So just a couple of housekeeping items at the beginning. I want to let you know that this is being recorded and you'll find this up on our website probably later today as soon as I get to it. And so if you want to go back and view it, you'll be able to find it there. We're going to have designated moments throughout today for the public to ask questions. We will have a public comment period near the beginning for those who signed up ahead of time to provide that public comment. And then later in the session, we'll open it up for members of the public to ask questions as well. You can either do that, we can promote you so that you can verbalize your question or you can put it into the Q and A function at the bottom, we can read it out and we'll have the appropriate staffer or board member answer it. So really excited to have this moment to speak to the public like we do each year. And with that, I'll hand it over to our board secretary, Ed Hubbard, to provide some opening remarks.
Ed? Yes, thank you so much, Gary. And I'm on behalf of the Board of Directors of the DC Green Bank. I just want to welcome and certainly echo Gary's comments, but but welcome all of you here today. My name is Ed Hubbard. As Gary indicated, I serve as the board secretary, but I also serve on the executive committee as well as chair the governance committee, but 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 I'm what I'm what I'm very proud of, I think, is that I was a I am a founding board member of the DC's Green Bank. As a person or professional who's been engaged in renewable energy advocacy for over 15 years, I can tell you that one of my most and one of my proudest achievements, one of the greatest honors that I have is to be able to serve as the a founding board member for this Green Bank. The Green Bank's mission is to provide access to capital as we grow the economy to develop toward developing a more equitable, resilient and sustainable future for for the District of Columbia. In that process, I think the focus of the Green Bank is not as multifold. In addition to simply creating jobs and providing economic growth, we're trying to take on the very challenging goal, or at least objective of meeting the sustainability and resilience standards set forth for the city, reducing carbon emissions and reducing utility costs for for residents, as well as improving the resilience of DC's infrastructure, which is extremely critical. This year FY 2023 has been, I think, a very great year, a phenomenal year for the Green Bank. Although it's been a little bit challenging as we move closer and closer, further and further away from COVID and closer and closer to our more normal existence. The Green Bank has been able to make some pretty significant achievements in in 2023, FY 2023. We were able to close eight deals with amounting to $16 million deployed, but but resulting in 152 million in investments. In addition to that, and and before I move on from that, and those those deals have been in a large part towards four, five, seven, and eight, but we also have a couple of deals in words one and three. So you're seeing achievements or at least impacts across most, if not all, of Washington DC. In addition to that, the Green Bank has been has taken over and in charge of the DC's PACE program and in that role, FY 23, we were able to prove eight projects totaling 28 million. So as I indicated throughout this effort, we've been able to show some growth and continued growth and and accomplishment of the goals set forth or or undergirding the DC Green Bank. But as I mentioned to you, 2023 has also been a little bit challenging. We've had some leadership changes. And and one of the, I think, greatest accomplishments outside of those leadership challenges is is the arrival of our new CEO, Tricia Miller. Tricia Miller has been well-heeled in the area of renewable energy and and I can just tell you that we are so excited about having her take over as the leader of the of the Green Bank. We're really looking for us as a member of the board and and I certainly speak for all of the members of the board. We're excited about the future, what the future holds, and I can tell you that we are 100% behind Tricia as she helps to move the Green Bank and expand the the good work that we've been able to do. Before I turn to Trish, I did want to ask if there were any members of the Board of Directors on the call that would like to say something with respect to certainly the work that that the Board of Directors is doing in consistent with Green Bank's activities.
Hi, this is Todd Monash. I'm a founding member of the Board as well. Well said. And tremendous numbers. And I think one thing that should always be remembered also, there were a lot of headwinds with the the market and with increasing Fed rates made it very, very difficult to deploy those to get to those numbers, but we we won the market and we still remain conservative and strong and look forward to another successful year in 24.
Thank you, Todd. So so with that said, I'd like to turn the floor over to our new CEO, Tricia Miller. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you, Ed, and thank you to the full board for your support and leadership. I'm it's an honor for me to be here with all of you today. And I want to acknowledge our recent milestone. We celebrated a fifth year anniversary of the DC Green Bank. So Todd and Ed and many of the board members who've been here since the inception created that architecture and framework for success and we're just delighted to have reached this milestone. I'm so happy to be here and to serve as the new CEO of DC Green Bank and lead us with this incredible team, staff and board members into our next chapter. As part of that fifth year anniversary celebration, I also just wanted to recognize the mayor, Mayor Bowser and our city council for their visionary leadership in creating the Green Bank to spread inclusive prosperity across the district. And I want to acknowledge our board chair, Brandy Collender, who's been here since the beginning alongside our governance committee chair, Ed Hubbard, and many of the board members represented today. Thank you, Todd Monash, Carmen Pigler, Jonathan Kane. We I also want to recognize Rick Noguera, Deborah Loomis, our new vice chair, Nick Berger, and Saroche Olpadwala, who all serve and are volunteering their time and lending their expertise to ensure that DC Green Bank is advancing our climate and equity goals and delivering on our promise to the District of Columbia. And I want to thank our incredible staff, the DC Green Bank team, some of whom you see around the room, others on the line, are really the heart and soul of this organization. And their commitment to bring projects to life are helping us achieve our clean energy and climate goals and delivering on those benefits to underserved communities across the district. As you heard Ed mention, we are serving many wards and going deeper, you know, in terms of community and climate impact in these district neighborhoods in supporting small businesses, helping them to thrive to advance in clean energy, energy efficiency and green buildings, as well as climate resilient infrastructure across all wards in the district. We have a great deal to be proud of at the DC Green Bank. And as we reached the end of this year, I just wanted to acknowledge both the work that we're doing and the work that's ahead of us, which we'll dig into when we look at the pipeline. But just a couple of points to build on the great introduction and framework that that Ed laid out. In FY 23, we saw tremendous activity, particularly towards the end, the second half to the end of this year, and that's a result of this team. 75% of last year's new loan bookings closed between March and September. So when I started, the team was, you know, all all systems go, really, you know, building those community partnerships, creating a network, a robust pipeline through our direct lending and also through Ronald's leadership on the PACE program. And on on the green lending side, you'll again, you'll hear more detail on recent loans that have closed in our pipeline. But I was excited to see the growth in new loan activity, in particular in the green building sector, which represented just over 60% of that new loan volume. And then over 35% of new loan bookings that are represented across the solar sector. And of course, these these projects aren't in isolation. We are seeing the ability to leverage the Building Energy Performance Standard, BEPS, going deeper on green retrofits in affordable housing with our partners and support of DC Housing and Communities Development, taking advantage of the great tools and the investments that DC has made through the Housing Trust Fund through the LIHTC program. You know, we come in as as a piece of an important set of capital investments that are supporting our communities and our neighborhoods and helping to to address the unmet needs of affordable housing, but also to elevate the potential for net zero to become a reality across the residential and commercial sector. And so it takes the, you know, programs like DC Solar for All layered with energy efficiency incentives and standards alongside private capital that we can help crowd in to show what's possible to achieve net zero and building decarbonization and a clean energy grid. So it it really takes all of the tools and all of the people represented around the room on this call today and working behind the scenes to ensure that our dollars are having maximum impact in terms of achieving climate impact to get us towards net zero and support the mayor's goal, as well as advancing our affordable housing goals, our Justice 40 commitments in partnership with the federal government and supporting communities and businesses to create new jobs and and a thriving economy in DC. At this point, I think I'll turn it over to Gary to see if we have public comments that are already lined up in the queue. Thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you, Tricia. And again, as I said at the beginning, there are folks who signed up. Buy public comment ahead of time, and then there will also be an opportunity for questions and answers from the public later in the session, if you have been following our presentation. Matthias Pausian from Sierra Club signed up to provide public comment. I don't see Matthias in the attendees list at this time. And so I think we can in real time go ahead and move into part of our presentation and then come back to Matthias if he's able to join a little bit later in the session. So what we're going to do is we're going to project our presentation and go ahead and move into the financial overview. And I'll hand it back to our CEO, Tricia Miller, to talk about our financials in FY 23 and sort of looking ahead to this current fiscal year in FY 24 in terms of our budget. Tricia?
Great, thank you, Gary. The next slide you should see is the financial update for the end of the fiscal year 23. It's loading and we're seeing it here. Thank you, Mike. The the takeaway for us and and what we wanted to share with all of you is the strong financial position of DC Green Bank as we reach the end of FY 23. You're seeing our total assets as over $78 million. That's again, a combination of activities, including loans that we funded over the course of FY 23. Over nearly $25 million in loans funded are reflected in our budget. We also are, you know, including for you to see a look over the course of the fiscal year, which ended at the end of September, this this September 2023, a combination of total liabilities of 1.249 million, which includes accrued liabilities as well as deferred revenue, interest reserves and debt service. We have on the statement of activities, as you're as you're going from top to bottom of this slide, you'll see the operating revenue reflected as just over $1.5 million for the year, which is a growth over from FY 22 to FY 23. That growth is attributable to our loan interest income from our direct lending as well as program fees for our direct loans and program fees for administering the PACE program, which you'll hear about in more detail. So we are we are delighted to be, you know, hitting the end of the year in, you know, such a strong position and starting the beginning of fiscal year 24, really positioned for sustained growth and continued direct lending and pace in our indirect administration role. The operating expenses that you see on this slide too, just draw your attention to our operating expenses for general and admin as well as salaries and benefits. And then on non-operating revenue, the interest income reflecting our activities tied to the funds that that we've received over the course of the year. The transfer line item, just to call your attention to that $22 million figure, that is inclusive of a couple of different sources. One is SETF that's transferred through the district from DOE to DC Green Bank. So we have, we ended the fiscal year with fully funded on SETF with some additional $2 million that were a catch-up from prior years. So we're again, really excited to be in a strong position to deploy those dollars for clean energy and energy efficiency programs across DC. And we also have to carry forward into FY 24 our Building Energy Performance Standard related sources of funds, which Mark will talk about in more detail. But inclusive of that transfer in FY 23 was the second installment of funds for tied to building energy performance, just over $10 million in FY 23. We can go to the next slide. I wanted to give everyone a big picture of our FY 24 budget, which was approved by our Board of Directors at the end of September. Here we are projecting a total revenue figure of $3.4 million. This is based on income projected to be earned across the portfolio in terms of current and future loan deployment activities. We also understand that not all deployments in 24 are going to earn interest this year. It will depend on the timing and the cycle of deployment, but these are our anticipated sources of program and operating revenue for the year. And you will also see the total expense line item for FY 24 projected at 4.4 million. That is inclusive of a full leadership team and supporting our finance and accounting team. As Ed mentioned, FY 23 was really a year of transition. We are rebuilding the team and I'm pleased to be sitting next to Dion Joma, who's our new general counsel, and we're delighted to have her. This is a key position and among the officers and leaders of the organization and we're continuing to move forward with. And for those of you who've looked at our website recently, you'll see the open positions for Chief Investment Officer and Chief Financial Officer. So we are well-staffed, but also positioned for growth in key areas across our departments. So with that, I will turn it back to Gary to move on to the next section. Unless it's more time for me to speak.
No, we'll go ahead and move ahead. We're going to reset the view of the slides real quick to make sure that everybody's seeing the same thing on the on the virtual feed here. So if you give us a second, we'll pick this back up in a minute.
Tell me when we're done. Okay. So I'm I was going to transition to our investment team and our PACE administration team. As we again, look forward at this year and look back at our activities from fiscal year 23, I wanted to highlight a few things and then pass the baton to Mary Edwards. First off, DOE has been instrumental in incubating the DC Green Bank and DCSU has been a key partner to bring incentives and pair our lending with local programs and investments to maximize the impact that we can have across the District of Columbia and most importantly, in serving DC residents. So it is truly a joint effort. And as you saw, the contributions that come through the funding streams to DC Green Bank help us deliver on our climate and community impact and also help us crowd in in a, you know, significant way. Private sector capital that's sitting on the sidelines that we want to see invested right here in the district as part of DC's comeback plan and as part of our commitment to supporting jobs and climate investments across DC. The together we've been and will continue to deploy energy efficiency and renewable energy solutions for thousands of families and individuals across the district. And this is truly the kind of transformation that we are see and can can realize to create new jobs and help us grow a clean and affordable energy future for all DC residents. Thanks to new federal and local dollars, we're proud to be launching with DOE a new energy efficiency revolving loan fund this year. So keep an eye out for that new program, which is in the works as we speak. And then with HCSMA and DHCD, we're also starting a resilience revolving loan fund. And that will enable our investments to go even further in supporting climate resilience activities across the district's affordable housing portfolio. These new financial products and programs are built on partnerships and creativity. And at DC Green Bank, we're proud to be a part of a thriving network of mission-based green banks across the country and across the region, as well as community lenders and CDFIs. So what you're seeing in terms of our current financial impact, we are really looking forward to scaling and building on the models that have been successful and continue to grow and thrive across DC. This is a movement that's here to stay and together we're going to be able to support our communities by bridging critical climate and capital solutions together. So with that, I'll turn it to Mary Edwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Tricia. Hi, everyone. I'm Mary Edwards. I'm the Director of Underwriting at DC Green Bank. I'm pleased to have the opportunity to share some of the good news stories from this past fiscal year. I joined the bank in January of 2023. And as Tricia mentioned, we've accomplished a lot since then. And I'm here to highlight a few of the loans that we booked during the fiscal year of 2023. The first one you'll see is Uprise Solar. This is a solar construction loan. And the a lot of our loan bookings in last year were focused on construction, whether it was for the deployment of solar panels or the retrofit of green buildings or the the full electrification of buildings that also included a substantial construction component. In this case, we deployed loan proceeds of 385,000 in the form of a term loan. It was previously a construction loan that we converted to perm. The total project was about 950,000 in total project cost. This project included 187 kilowatts across 24 residential rooftop solar projects. It served LMI communities in the district and contributed to seven full-time jobs and eight part-time jobs in the District of Columbia. And you'll see, as Ed pointed out earlier in the kickoff of this meeting, this impacted multiple wards within the district, including wards four, five, seven and eight. So we were happy to continue to support Uprise and their endeavors to expand access to solar power within the district. The next one I have for you is Copernican, another solar developer doing a lot of great work in the District of Columbia. In this case, we issued a new $500,000 construction to perm loan. And it primarily benefited low LMI households within Ward seven and eight. The total project size in this case was $668,000, generating 191 kilowatts of solar capacity once the panels are installed. And reducing energy bills by a minimum of 50% for 23 LMI households. Copernican does a lot of work in this space and we're happy to be their partner in installing more solar panels benefiting LMI households within the district. And again, this benefited primarily Ward seven and eight. The final one that I will share with you is a piece. If you check out our social media, we just had a tour of the property along with Congressman Allen. And this was a $3.3 million construction facility to rehab two different properties in Ward eight, benefiting an emerging developer who is a resident of the district. This solar panels are going to be installed in this project. It's going to reduce energy bills for LMI households. And it's going to create eight new units of affordable housing and preserve four units of existing affordable housing in the district. The projects are located, one project is located near the former RF RFK Stadium. And the second project is near the intersection of 22nd Street and Nicholson. And again, both in Ward seven and eight, this has been a great project for us to really demonstrate our ability to support emerging developers as well as provide clean, energy-efficient improvements to existing affordable housing projects. With that, I'm going to pass it along to Mark Erickson that's going to share a few more additions to our portfolio for the past fiscal year.
Thanks, Mary. Hi, everybody. Thanks for being here. My name is Mark Erickson. I'm the Director of Financing Programs. The projects I'm going to share with you today are kind of focused on how we are able to leverage our capital as part of a larger capital stack with both private and public sources to all come together to make these projects happen in order to they have the the green goals of the district. So these will have private capital as well as our district partners, including the HCD, DCHA, DCHFA and other district housing authorities that we have. So the first one I'd like to talk about is Cycle House. So this is a total of a 7.5 million construction facility. We partnered with LISP, which is the local initiatives support corporation for a $2 million investment. It had a total project size of 13 million, and this is a new construction project in Ward five, and this is this is a project that's pushing where we like to see projects go as far as energy efficiency. It's going to be a net zero energy project, and it's also aiming for LEED Platinum and Passive House Sustainability certifications. Of those 18 units of affordable housing that are put in, there's also about 1,500 square feet of commercial space in this project. So if we go on to the next one, this is again, this is a $2 million investment as part of a much larger facility. What we targeted our investment with this larger capital stack was a whole building heat pump, VRF HVAC system. And this is part of the district moving towards a more energy efficient goals. So this has a 46 to 54% reduction to typical natural gas alternatives. So we wanted to make sure these projects are able to be built to meet DOE's requirements as far as Building Energy Performance Standards and way beyond. So not just when they are completed, but above and beyond, so they'll meet those that standards from multi-cycle compliance. This building will be Enterprise Green Communities Plus and DOEs are certified upon completion. One of the interesting things about this, this project is the first affordable housing project in Ward three that has DHCD investment, and it's also a senior affordable housing project. So it's meeting the needs of citizens throughout the district in Ward three as well and senior housing as well. So different citizens and different groups within the district. And last, this was our the last investment I'll be talking about. This was another construction to permanent facility that was a collaboration with other district entities as well as private capital. So this one has a lot of interesting things that I'll touch on, so it's So this one has a lot of interesting things that I'll touch on. So it's fifty-two units of affordable housing, but it's not just affordable housing that are at this project. It has a focus on returning citizens and welcome them into it so they have a place to stay. And with that, it has a very innovative aquaponics farm, as you can see on there on the roof. That's actually the plants that are growing for there, and it has a closed-loop system. So on the top is the plants that are growing, and it actually has a loop where there's fish at the bottom. So it creates a closed-loop system to more efficiently grow produce. And with that produce, they're doing multiple benefits with it. They're using it, one, to serve to the residents at there, and the other half, they're also going to use that to sell at local farmer's market. And the returning citizens will have a job training as part of working in the aquaponics farm. So this is putting together a lot of things within the district. It's affordable housing, supportive services for returning citizens, as well as meeting and exceeding the district's green goals moving forward. And this was also in another ward. So this was in Ward one. So I think between the investments we've talked about, we've almost hit every ward that we've there. So we're trying to make sure our impact is not focused in any part, but every citizen of the district can benefit in every area. So so those are the three I'm going to focus on. I'm going to take this moment. I'm going to hand it over to our PACE Program Director, Ronald Hobson.
Thank you, Mark, and good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ronald Hobson. The PACE Program, for those who do not know what the PACE Program is about, it is a public-private partnership between the district and capital providers who are investing in the district. The program was established ten years ago and is designed to assist commercial property owners in the district with financing their green energy projects. The PACE loans are repaid through a special tax assessment and are considered an off-balance-sheet item. We currently have twenty-four capital providers participating in the program to provide you with access to capital to meet your green energy requirements. The D C Green Bank took over the program in October of two thousand and twenty-one from urban ingenuity. And since that time, I am pleased to announce that the PACE Program achieved a significant milestone in September of this year, providing over one hundred million dollars in loans to district commercial property owners. And I should add that we have made PACE loans in every ward in the district. The PACE Program has been quite, has become quite attractive financing vehicle as D C Green Bank has generated over forty-eight million dollars since taking over the program. And as Ed mentioned earlier, closed eight projects totaling twenty-eight million dollars in fiscal year twenty-three. I believe our outlook looks very bright for fiscal year twenty-four with a robust pipeline in hand. Since we began tracking job creation in fiscal year twenty-three, the PACE Program created one thousand five hundred jobs, over a thousand construction jobs, and nearly five hundred permanent jobs. We continue to add capital providers to help you gain access to capital. We added six local and national capital providers in fiscal year twenty-three, and we hope to see some activity from them in fiscal year twenty-four. While, next slide, while our largest PACE deal to date was the financing of the D C Audi Stadium, we closed a variety of PACE deals in fiscal year twenty-three, including two hotels, three apartment buildings, a childcare center, a condo, and a mixed-use facility that housed the African-American Civil War Museum. We're very excited to continue to serve the community. So I want you to go out and please spread the word that the PACE Program is open for business. And this conclude my presentation.
Great. Thanks, Ronald. That's very exciting. You could hear it in his voice. The PACE Program has become a very important part of what we do here at D C Green Bank. And so this is an opportunity now that you've seen about our investments over the past fiscal year and a little bit beyond for us to return to an opportunity for the public to engage with us. And so I want to make sure that since Matthias Postian from D C Chapter of Sierra Club signed up, I want to check to see if Matthias is is on and available. Getting signaled that he's not. However, this is an opportunity for others who have joined from the public, listening into the presentations today, to either signal that you'd like to ask a question out loud to us or begin putting questions into the Q and A function at the bottom of Zoom. This is a valuable moment for us to hear input from the public, but it is not the only time. This is something we do once a year, but we take inputs all day, every day. You can reach out to us and we'll be responsive at info at D C Green Bank dot com. That's where we get the the majority of our emails from the public. And then also you can follow along and learn even more about some of the projects you heard about today on our social media channels, which are on Instagram, Twitter, LinkedIn, and YouTube. All of those are at D C Green Bank. And so I'm going to check to see if there are any questions in the chat from the public.
None yet.
None yet. Okay. Well, if you have questions, please do put those into the chat because we'd love to hear from you. And as I pointed out, this recording and our presentation will be made available on the website later today. So you can go back and enjoy the overview that we had for our projects so far. So as we wait to see if there are going to be any questions from the public, in a second, I'm going to turn it back to our new CEO, Tricia Miller, to to begin to wrap up the session. But the last thing that I wanted to share is that we're always open to input on how to make the annual public hearing more interactive and maybe co-locate it with other events in the community at the end of the year. And so if you have thoughts on that, please do share them. And the last thing I'll let you know is that we are feverishly putting together our annual report, which will have even more details about our investments, but also our expected community and environmental impacts. And so you will see that in the coming weeks, where we'll share that with the public and also make sure that we submit it to the mayor's office and to the Senate Council alongside our audited financial statements. So you can engage in an important public effort to oversee your Green Bank. And so with that, I'll turn it over to our CEO, Tricia Miller, to provide some remarks. And then we'll have Ed, our secretary. Oh, I forgot my my own slide. The last thing here is it's very important for us to be out in the community. That's what this bank was created to do, was to deliver climate and community impacts. And so quickly, just to highlight some of the things that we did this past fiscal year and beyond, we celebrated five years of D C Green Bank. In two thousand and eighteen, the mayor signed the Green Finance Authority Act, which established the bank and board members that you heard from earlier were here from the very beginning, even before there were staff. The first staff member was hired in April of two thousand and twenty. So as you can see, quite a lot of work went into standing up the bank even before there were any staff hired. And so celebrating five years since our creation was really important to us, and we did that a few weeks ago. And we're joined by a lot of partners who were instrumental in making sure that we have had the impact we have to date and building on that into the future. We made sure that we talked to other green banks and other governmental entities who are interested in learning from us and sharing information, and that included international visitors who were in town. And so we met with delegations from the German government and the Vietnamese governments as well, where we were able to talk about our direct lending as well as the D C PACE Program as instrumental tools in building a cleaner, greener, and more inclusive future for all district residents. We made sure that we got out and gave a little bit of our time as well. We engaged with multiple tree plantings with our colleagues over at Casey Trees, as well as Green Compass, one of the small businesses that we have invested in for stormwater projects. We also spent some time at the Capital Area Food Bank. And there's a video on social media if you want to hear it. We set a record for the most boxes of food ever packed at one community service event. So not to brag too much, but it's something that we're pretty proud of and looking forward to doing more of in the future. I hope members of the public were able to join us at Open Streets as well. We were out in the community handing out information and swag and talking about D C Green Bank's impact in the community and the ways that we can lend dollars to projects across the city to make living here more affordable and more green. We also engaged in the city's Infrastructure Week and March Madness. These are yearly events where it's a showcase for the district to talk about the things that we are invested in, the ways that the city is trying to build a brighter future for all. And so Infrastructure Week is a time where the mayor brings all of the agencies together to talk about investments that are being made in infrastructure. And March Madness is a showcase event where there are procurement opportunities, opportunities for small businesses to get involved and better understand what the city is doing on the development side, and that is run by the Deputy Mayor for Planning and Economic Development. And we're also very excited to talk about that a lot of these investments that are celebrations, whether it's a groundbreaking or whether it's a ribbon cutting. We like being out in the community and really seeing our projects come to life. And I know it's an important thing for staff to see that the investments that we make have real-world impact. So you see there, and you heard from Mark about the Lysner Senior Project went to the groundbreaking, and that's the picture. You see off to the right, our new CEO, Tricia Miller, in the hard hat, as well as our Board Chair, Brandy Colander, celebrating with the Lysner folks. It really was a joyous occasion where people were able to share personal stories as well. The Lysner community welcoming seniors into the property. And the mayor shared her personal story about family members that have resided there and her excitement about the opportunity for all many district agencies to come together, including D C Green Bank, to invest in that project. We went to the Faircliff Groundbreaking, which is a project in Ward one in Columbia Heights, which is a redevelopment of an affordable housing property where it is striving for passive house certification. I believe it's net neutral carbon for the property, which includes green roofing, solar panels, stormwater infrastructure onsite, electric vehicle chargers, and expands the number of affordable housing units onsite by more than fifty percent. So we're excited to see that. And if you haven't seen it, it's up on Fourteenth Street. And it's moving very quickly. So we're really excited about that project and hope that we can attend a ribbon cutting in the future as well. You heard about the Jubilee Housing Ontario Place Project, and Mark was able to attend the the groundbreaking for that as well. I'm really excited to see that move forward and have conversations to see if there are ways we can continue to invest in affordable housing, sustainable development, and our returning citizens. We attended the Festival Center Ribbon Cutting, which is a community jewel, I would say, and located in Adams Morgan that brings members of faith community together and other community-serving institutions to serve as a hub. And that project has a PACE note on it and something that we're very proud of and excited to, we were excited to attend that ribbon cutting that also had Chairman of the City Council Mendelson there, as well as Council Member Nadeau and our partners over at D C S E U. And lastly, we attended the Sycamore Oak Ribbon Cutting in Southeast. That's a very exciting, sustainable development project that really is a showcase for Ward eight. It is home to multiple small businesses that are being incubated there. It is built from sustainable timber and is looking to add solar as well as battery storage onsite and really demonstrate the power of investment, investing in in sustainability and how communities can benefit. And there are multiple phases planned for the future that we hope to have conversations on to see if there are ways that we can support those projects. So just wanted to give you a little overview of us out in the community. There are dozens of other events that we attended. We can share more information about if you're interested and also always check on social media so you can see where we are and what we're up to. So. Yes, Mike.
Oh, and before we, before we move on, we do have some public comments. And so one of the questions was, is there a green? Is there a standard for green building certification required for projects seeking funding? Or does it vary?
I'll start and then encourage my colleagues to to pick up. As as you saw throughout the presentation today, we are targeting investments in a range of project types. So that includes community facilities as well as commercial residential in the multifamily space. Each of those building types comes with different opportunities for green standards and certifications, depending on their size and construction type. We invest in new construction projects, as Mark highlighted, that are achieving certifications or seeking certifications under passive house on zero-energy-ready homes, DOE's designation. You saw Enterprise Green Communities Plus. I'm sure I'm missing others, but it it, there is as is the individual asked, a range of certifications that come with projects that we will consider investing in. The standard for building energy performance, the BEPS Program, really, you know, is key as we look at the opportunity to target investments in the existing building portfolio across the district and to look ahead at new projects that will come online. And based on their square footage, we'll need to to meet future and multiple future cycles of BEPS compliance. So we see, you know, a chance through Green Bank investments to both raise the floor and support getting on track with our policy goals and standards that the district has well underway and has been a leader on across the nation, as well as using our dollars to get it even higher achieving targets when it comes to reaching net zero goals for the built environment. And that requires some innovative thinking and some partnerships to ensure that, you know, whatever slice of the capital stack D C Green Bank's investments are going into will help meet those additional green measures to even go further beyond what might be a mandatory requirement, for example. So we are always pushing the envelope and encourage and welcome feedback and your engagement in across D C to help think about what's on the horizon. You know, how do we set, you know, aspirational targets that are in line with the net zero goals but are also achievable with the capital that's needed and the D C Green Bank can provide to reach those goals in real time? Because we, what we don't want to do is lock in incremental progress. We want to be on that cutting edge of innovation, but to do it in a deployment-focused way where we are able to bring the the green building materials, the technology improvements, and the available commercially available solutions to the market as quickly as possible. And that's where our money can really be catalytic.
Hey, not seeing any other inputs from staff here in the room. Mike, any additional questions from the public?
No additional questions.
Thank you. All right. I'll hand it over to Tricia to provide some closing remarks, and then we'll hand it over to our Board Secretary to close it out.
Great. I think we can exit this slideshow and see who else is is on the screen. Thank you, Mike. And thank all of you for joining today's annual public hearing. It's a, it's a real privilege to be to be surrounded by such exceptional talent among the D C Green Bank team. Thank you, Ronald, Mary, Dionne, Mark, Gary, and Mike for being part of this conversation, for lifting up the important work in our portfolio, in the pipeline. I hope if if any, you know, message you could take away from today's meeting is that we are open for business, as Ronald said. D C Green Bank is, you know, anchored in the community. We are positioned to succeed in delivering a green, healthy, and vibrant D C. We can only do that through partnerships and by identifying and pursuing great opportunities in every ward across the district to lift up climate and clean energy solutions that are rooted in local communities and local businesses. So I was just taken back by the strong jobs numbers from the PACE summary. I mean, this is as much an economic development opportunity for D C Green Bank to be part of the D C Comeback and Economic Development Plan alongside our alongside our climate investments. It's, it's a clean energy future anchored by jobs in our communities and by solutions that we can deliver and hope to do more of in celebrating the bricks and mortar work that Gary highlighted from our ribbon cuttings and groundbreakings. We want to build back a clean energy future and help ensure that building decarbonization is a home run for job growth and a sustained and thriving economy across the district. So thank you for being part of today's event. Thank you, Ed, for opening the meeting and representing our board alongside Carmen. I see Nick is on, Jonathan, and Todd. We have a tremendous voluntary board who are always pushing us to go further, faster, and to do it with full accountability, transparency, and a deep-rooted commitment to all of you across DC. So thank you for the privilege to join you today, and Ed, I'll pass it back to you to close this out.
So I did want to just very briefly echo Tricia's comments, but more importantly, this, this public hearing opportunity is really for engagement. You know, we at the Green Bank have the Herculean task of helping the city transition to 100% renewable, but that can't happen without the engagement and involvement of leaders and community voices. So with that said, I too am very privileged and honored to be a part of this, this effort and appreciative for everyone that was able to join and, and listen through to, at, at, at the presentation for this hearing. So with that said, I would thank everybody from attending, both the board, staff, and the public, and encourage you to reach out to us if you have any sort of questions or need any sort of information or feedback on, on, on the work that we're doing. So with that said, I would, I would close our, our hearing today.
Thank you, Emma.
Thank you.